I call to order the meeting of the Shawnee City Commission July 16, 2012. Call roll please.
Stevens, Sims.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be given by Don Lynch since Kevin Nagel is not here. All who wish to, please rise.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this day and for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us a great community in which to live and for all those who serve in it. We pray for your guidance and wisdom this evening as we go about doing the business of this great city. We pray for the men and women who are serving in our military services, that you would be with them, protect and guide them in their mission. We pray for an early end to war around the world. We pray for those in our community who may be less fortunate than us, who may be in need, who may be grieving, who may be in other ways in need, and we pray that you would give us the ability where we can to assist them. Lord, keep us safe as we go from here, that we may continue to serve you and serve this community. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll start with G.
all.
The following minutes and reports. Thank you, Don.
I'm just curious on the SCCDA minutes.
Item number one is consider approval of agenda.
From May, there's a payment to Mike McCormick for IFYR 2012, and in researching that, it
So move.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Winteringer.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Harrod.
appears that that's a monthly fee that's paid to Mr. McCormick of $300 each month.
Call roll please.
Winteringer.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
The board approved to do that about a year ago as part of an ongoing...I serve on that
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
board as the secretary of it.
Aye.
Smith.
The board approved $300 stipend, I believe it is, annually to keep IFYR events advertised
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two is consider approval of consent agenda.
Need to pull two N for clarification.
Okay.
I'd like to say S, pull two.
all year long. Mr. Jackson's not here since the event just finished up last week, or he could answer
All right.
the question probably better than I, but...
N and S.
Advertised? Is that in the newspaper?
I think it's more just, you know, writing articles and things of that nature.
Anybody else?
G.
And G.
Yeah, I'd like that explained at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Do you want to approve the minutes as they stand? Can I have a motion to approve the balance?
Don move.
We're at the wait till next month.
Of two? A motion to approve two minus G, N, and S by Commissioner Harrod. Okay.
Or our next meeting.
We defer that then until?
Second.
Yes.
Next meeting? And a second by Vice Mayor Collier.
Is that everything on item G?
That's all I have.
Call roll please.
Harrod.
So do you want to approve the balance?
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Balance of G, that's fine.
Smith.
Aye.
And so move.
Sims.
Okay. So your motion will be to approve the minutes and reports from G minus the SCCDA minutes from May 17?
Yes, and defer that forward to the next meeting.
And defer that to the next meeting. Okay. Did you get that?
Mm-hmm.
Donna?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Sims, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Aye.
All right. A second, Commissioner Smith. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two N, traffic commission recommendations. Think this one is very confusing because of what the staff recommendation was...oh, I don't want to say what the staff recommendation was and what the vote was by the traffic commission itself on the...yeah.
And also, we did not have any minutes on the 26th to even see what happened there. So it was really...we didn't really know what was going on and why we had the two different recommendations or which one we were approving if we...
Well, accepting staff recommendation, our board's...
Right, because we got two different recommendations.
The item on the traffic commission, you're always...the item is always the recommendation of the traffic commission. What you see of the staff recommendation is what is presented to the traffic commission. But they...on this one, we was presenting, recommending no parking on Bradley, but the traffic commission denied that. They did not agree with us. So the item of no parking on Bradley Street was denied.
But normally, we have something in our packet. Given us a reason why.
We give just what's in there now. The minutes of this meeting won't appear until the next meeting because the minutes have to be approved by the traffic commission.
Right. So do you have a reason from that discussion about why the board denied it?
The...one of the reasons was one of the developers appeared and because of going to be building some homes along Bradley Street, they thought it would unduly burden the homeowners to not be able to park there on Bradley. The issue of why the recommendation came forward was because during construction, the workers over there for the Primrose Development was parking on Bradley Street or on...yeah, on Bradley Street and making it so congested that it was interfering with through traffic there. So that's why they were...came before us and was wanting to put up no parking signs. But for all that to go through the process, it really took care of itself because construction eased and it's pretty well...pretty well done. So...but the item that you always approve on this thing is the traffic commission's recommendations, not staff's. Now, you can go behind that and discuss it, but we have to present the traffic commission's recommendation.
But it's hard for us to determine which way if we don't have an understanding of why they come to that decision.
Right.
I think they're getting ready to pour their parking lot stuff out there.
Yeah, they are. They're getting ready.
So you think this was brought up initially because of the construction that was happening?
Because congestion during construction, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to move to approve the board's recommendation?
Second.
All right. A motion by Vice Mayor Collier and a second by Commissioner Sims to approve the board recommendation of denial. Right?
Right.
Okay. Call roll please.
Collier.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two S, request to go out for RFQs for design and construction of the municipal pool.
I had that pulled. I'm not opposed to going out for RFQs for design, but I think we've got a long way to go before we think about the construction. And I'd also suggest that in the interview process, there's some people in Shawnee that should be that know much more about pool than personally I do, but yeah, they deserve all the committee to interview us. So I'd like to see that amended, that we go ahead and put out the RFQ for design, but that a group, maybe a commissioner or two and some staff and some citizens will be involved in the final decision, a recommendation to the commission of an architect or a design firm.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may make some comments about that, I think that we sort of did the same process when we did the water and sewer master plan. And we've got a...we've got a structure that was built in 1936, and there's been some discussion about whether we save the existing structure and try and work within those confines or we...or we don't, or some...something in between there. You know, this process of going through an RFQ process doesn't cost us any money, but it gives us the opportunity to interview potential architectural and engineering firms so that we get the best design for what fits our needs. And I do think that we need to create it with some...some citizens in the community. Some names that come to mind are probably Kevin Calleese, Dr. Sam Fries at OBU, and some of those folks. We can...we can fanta around those, but I think it'll probably take us, you know, 60 days or 90 days to come up with that, and that would be staff's recommendation is that we go out and come up with some...some names for the commission to approve to be on that group, and then solicit for qualifications would be the best method.
We can do that, and I will say that I had already asked some citizens, maybe about a month or two ago, to start looking at this, and I don't mind putting their names forward. And some of them are the ones you just mentioned, so yes.
Well, I maybe would just do the request for RFQ for design and set up a committee named to be submitted later to the commission.
I don't know that the RFQ for design and construction, to me, I read that just as construction documents, being able to not only design but produce building documents, if you will.
Well, if I may have been in construction business, that means two different things.
No, sir. Let me make sure I clarify this, Madam Mayor, because this is not actually spend any money or do any bricks and mortar or do any design. This is simply just to select an architectural or engineering firm. After you do that, we'd select and bring a contract to the city commission to execute for a design, and then they would take six months or however long it takes to do that, and then we'd pay them based on either...either a set amount or a percentage of the project cost or something like that. This is simply only choosing a architect and an engineering firm.
Well, that's what I want to make sure of.
And I'm good with that. I'd second that, and I think that...I don't know whether most people in this room who are listening know that we had a significant malfunction with our filtration system today and filled the pool with sand. And clearly, it's...James, you can give us an update on that.
Yeah, I was going to do that later, but I can now. But I just want to make sure that you understand that proven this RFQ doesn't mean we're going to do the construction. The construction is going to come back before y'all to go out to bid through the city to construct it. We just need somebody to help us design it and carry us through the construction on inspections and making sure everything's done to the specs they drew. So it doesn't mean we're just going to go right on out and build it.
James, while we're on the subject, can you go ahead and put those photos up so that we can have that conversation?
It is pertinent.
I do have a few pictures that I took today of what happened. You know, over the weekend, everything was fine. The parks guys come in this morning to do their morning test, do their vacuuming, and what they found was something that had happened before, but not as bad as it did this time.
They're on the TV, but they're not on there.
It's coming up.
Can we turn off the lines? James, where? All right.
This is the steps going down into the pool. The sand you see here was underneath the pool deck. When the pipe did, I guess finally come apart, it shot a lot of sand into the pool. There were some parts of this sand in there that we just had to take the vacuum off, stick the hose on it because it was about a foot deep. We had to send all that out to the park. This right here is the guttering. Where you see the sand in the guttering, and it is all the way across the front of the pool, that the water's not coming out of the return jets. It's coming out between the deck and that guttering and carrying the sand out with it. This is the sand in the bottom of the pool, and you can see where one of the jets is kind of blowing the sand around. But when we got there this morning, the water looked like we'd just filled the pool up. It wasn't blue. It looked just like it'd come right out of the spigot before we'd even done any balancing to it next. And there's another one. You know, we had to close the pool down today for the fact that you can't see anybody on the bottom of the pool, and frankly, I don't know that anybody actually wants to swim in that. And I think there's one more picture. We did pull parts of the deck up to see if we could actually locate. The one on the left is the one we'd done two years ago. That one didn't blow. It's still in good shape. But the one there on the right is where we think the problem is. But we can't pump that water out because the water in that hole stays the same level as the pool because it comes back to the jets. So what we're doing at this point, I've closed the pool down until Friday. Hopefully, you know, crossing my fingers, we'll have her back up and running Saturday for people to swim. But we've got to lower the level of the water in the pool in order to lower the level of water in that hole so we can get down to see where the problem actually is, and we hope it's right here at this hole. That hole right there is about two to two and a half foot deep. All the sand's gone, all the dirt's gone, so we know it's somewhere close in that area. If this is it, we're going to be out there first thing in the morning looking for it because the level will be down low enough. And if we can get it fixed and get it back up and circulating and balanced, it could be sooner than that. But we've also, you know, you've got to remember, we fixed that one, it moved. We fix this one, it might blow out somewhere else. So, you know, the crews have done real good this year, doing extra vacuuming, extra testing, trying to keep that pool open as much as we can, but this was just a little much, and you know, they have three weeks left to go, and if we can't get it up and running this week, my feelings are we're not going to get it back open this season because there will only be two more weeks left, so...but we're going to do what we can.
What kind of money are you talking about spending on this repair?
That repair probably, not including man hours, it might be about $300, I think.
Okay.
So if that's the hole.
Only hole?
Only hole.
I might also ask commissioners if you can think of any other names of people who might want to be on the committee.
Not just the...
We can start with that. People can always be added later, but this is the time that if you're going to visit any facilities, you know, they're open now. I mean, it's the summertime. Municipal pools are open now, so kind of gives maybe some of these citizens a heads up.
I'd like to add, if you're asking for a name, I'd like to add Kathy Cullen, who is a frequent user.
I think Carrie West, who you probably don't...
Yeah, West.
You probably already have your mind there.
Okay. Or you can send them to me. We'll get them on the next agenda. Okay. Or make phone calls, too.
When you talk about the pool, you as well face up to if you do a project, construction, there probably won't be a pool next summer. So that'll be right in the middle of construction time to do the design, three, six months to power the design, and six months to do the design, and then construction time.
Well, that's a year, and if a year would put us right about swim season next year, it seems like it could be done. It'd be close.
Okay. So did we have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Harrod and then Sims for a second to approve this item, right? Okay. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. Item number three, citizens' participation. Okay. Item number four, a public hearing and consideration of a conditional use permit in C-3 Automotive, Commercial, and Recreation District for property located at 924 North Harrison. Case number P-10-P-10-12, applicant Don Ciro's Tacos. I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this? Yeah, can you?
I'm here to represent Don Ciro, so if there are any questions, I'll be answering.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone wish to speak to it? Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I recommend we go ahead and approve it.
Okay. A recommendation to approve by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier. There are no provisions on this.
No, I've checked them.
Do I have a ordinance to read? Can you read that, please?
An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, to within the east 150 feet of lots seven and eight, block seven, Dexter Second Addition to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof. Rezoning said property from C-3 Automotive, Commercial, and Recreation to C-3P Automotive, Commercial, and Recreation District with conditional use permit and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee according to...
Thank you. Now, file that. Call roll please.
Smith.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number five, a public hearing and consideration of approval for a one-operator beauty parlor for property located at 1415 North Union. Case number P-11-12, applicant Jennifer Peltier Armanda. I will open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this? Does anyone...well, does anyone have any questions of the applicant? The recommendation of the planning commission was to deny it. I have a question, if you'll just come on up. I'm sorry.
I thought it's approved with conditions.
Auditions?
Yeah.
Is the hand drawing in here for street access off of Independence with the parking, was that after the planning commission meeting or was that part of the submittal?
That was part of the submittal. I brought that in that day.
Okay.
I was under the impression at the meeting that the staff had reversed their...
Yeah, it's for approval with conditions.
All right. Let me go... Planning commission approval with conditions, yes. I stand corrected. Okay, then. All right. Does anybody have any questions or anything from that? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve with the five conditions set by the planning commission.
Okay. A motion to approve based on the five conditions by Vice Mayor Collier, seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Sorry. All right. Any other comments? Read the...do we have an ordinance?
No.
No, just a condition. Okay. All right, then. Call roll please.
Collier.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Item number six, a public hearing and consideration of rezoning property located at 4030 North Kickafu from R1 Single Family Residence to C-3 Automotive, Commercial, and Recreation. Case number P-12-12, applicant O'Reilly Automotive Store. And I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this? Yes? Can you...you have to come on up to the podium and give us your name.
Name is Roger McMahon, and I live at lot nine, which is partially behind where O'Reilly will be building, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. At first, I was a little concerned about the easement width behind our backyard fence on the east side. Now, Justin just gave me a new drawing here that appears that there's going to be a distance perhaps of seven and a half or 15 feet between our fence and O'Reilly's fence, whereas the first one appeared to be right up against our backyard fence. And according to the location of the pins that mark the boundaries, which I spoke to Mr. Cox how to measure that out and locate the pins in the front yard and then measure to the back, that evidently legally, it's okay for me to move my fence back against the pin and include in my yard the seven and a half foot easement, but I really don't want to do that. And also, I'm wondering, will the O'Reilly fence be 15 feet from my fence or will it be seven and a half? Because down that alleyway, there's gas meters, as some of you know, that's seven and a half feet from my backyard. If I move my fence back, it'd be right up against the water meter, and if he brings his to the west, his is going to be right up against the...I mean, not the water meter, but the gas meter. So that's what I was concerned about there. The second thing, and you folks already know that, it may be number item...number seven on the item here of water, as you know, when it rains heavily, there's water rather githers back there in that low spot behind our fences in that area. So I assume number seven on this is what's going to address that perhaps, where it says stormwater requirements must be verified by consulting engineer. So I assume that's...that will be taken care of. And I didn't understand that number nine, 17 feet additional RW is required, what?
Right-of-way. Does it have a location?
No, it doesn't. I didn't know if that was a 17 feet out front or 17 feet back here around the backyard fence between us, myself, and O'Reilly.
We can have staff address that. Okay, so your concern was the right-of-way in the alley.
Yes, ma'am.
The drainage, and then the note, actually, your note nine, which is the 17-foot right-of-way. You don't know if that is...
I didn't know what that was.
Same as the first item or if that's separate.
And I talked to Cox and Justin about the pin that I had located behind our fence because I also saw the flags where the little pink tags were that indicates the boundary line, I assume. So...and that would put O'Reilly's...if they come up with that pink flag, then that would put their fence seven and a half feet from our fence, and to me, that would not leave enough easement for a utility truck to get up between the fences to service whatever they have to do. Because there is orange flags and yellow flags there indicating cable and gas right now, and it's rather odd because, well, not odd, but say this is my backyard fence, these flags go out 15 feet from my backyard fence, about ever 22 to 25 feet all the way across the backside of where O'Reilly's going to be located. And so if they brought their fence up to that center pin, I guess their parking lot would be over gas and over buried cable evidently. So that's my concern, folks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, we'll be happy to address Mr. McMahon's concerns in terms of location of fences and those types of things.
What the applicant can and cannot do should it be granted. Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak to this?
I'm just curious how we deal with that. That's an interior lot, and if they...if they do fence at the easement, there's a seven and a half foot hole that's not maintained.
Right.
That's correct, and this is...
So, and that would put O'Reilly's, if they come up with that pink flag, then that would put their fence seven and a half feet from our fence. And to me, that would not leave enough easement for a utility truck to get up between the fences to service whatever they have to do. Because there is orange flags and yellow flags there indicating cable and gas right now. And it's rather odd because, well, not odd, but say, this is my backyard fence, these flags go out 15 feet from my backyard fence, about ever 22 to 25 feet all the way across the backside of where O'Reilly's going to be located. And so if they brought their fence up to that center pin, I guess their parking lot would be over gas and over buried cable, evidently. So that's my concern, folks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, we'll be happy to address Mr. McMahon's concerns in terms of location of fences and those types of things.
What they, what the applicant can and cannot do, should it be granted? Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak to this?
I'm just curious how we deal with that. That's an interior lot, and if they, if they do fence at the easement, there's a seven and a foot, seven and a half foot hole that's not maintained.
Right.
That's, that's correct. And this, this area, just for clarification, although it kind of resembles an alleyway, it is actually just an easement that's on, on both of these plats, and these plats are approximately 50 years old. And there are a variety of utilities throughout this area. The properties within the bice, in addition, a lot of those fence lines, for whatever reason, just happen to, happen to run along the easement line as opposed to the property line. And a lot of newer subdivisions where, you know, have overhead power lines and everything's underground, you'll see most people today will construct their fence right on the actual property line as opposed to the easement line. Specific to O'Reilly's, the revised site plan, which again, this is all conceptual and, and because it's, it's a rezon application, as part of the, if this were approved, as part of the building permit, they would submit a more detailed engineering plan and, and we would have additional details. But based on the plan that they're showing today, that their proposed fence line is on their property line, not on their easement line. I suppose when they get out there and, and work to construct it, that they may modify that and may put it on, on the easement line as opposed to the property line. But that, either one would be acceptable by, by city standard. The parking is all off of the.
Wait, except that if, if, if it's on the property line, that seven and a half feet from the, from the, from the property in the back, which there's no longer a, a physical easement or access through that alley?
Only if one of the neighboring properties had a, had a fence that, that, that had an access point.
Okay.
I'm assuming somebody's mowing that property now and, and maintaining that.
Okay.
Either the individual property owners or on, on one side or the other of the alley.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, parking lot.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that the, all of the parking is, is off of the easement and off of the, off of the property line and, and meets the setback requirements. The drainage, we will require an engineered drainage plan concurrent with the building permits submittal. And the 17 feet of right-of-way is adjacent to Kickapoo Street, and they will, they will dedicate that as part of the development before they start construction.
They are also required to have certain number of parking places and.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It is a, it's a little bit tight on the side, it's, it's not, it's, it's a, but they can't physically construct their typical building and, and get the required parking and get maneuverability in addition to landscaping and, and all of the other set requirements. They will also be required to install a privacy fence where the property abuts residential, and so that would be the western property line and the southern property line.
Okay.
All of the building footprint and everything else has to be approved before construction.
Yes, sir.
But this approval would allow them to build up to the property line?
No. There has to be a setback. It would not allow them to build up to the property line. It'll allow them to fence up to the, up to the property.
Right, fence up, okay.
We do have these situations come up from time to time where there's just questions about property lines and, and generally what we do is, is work with the contractor to, to get with the adjacent property owner and to, and to, you know, come to an agreement. So I don't, just in talking with, with property owner and talking with O'Reilly's and, and you know, I believe that the concern about where exactly to cite the fence, I believe that can be worked through as we, as, as construction started or prior to.
So for, for an area that is going through changes like this, what are best practices for, for maintaining the, in this case, the residential feel of the properties that are to the west of this, and then allowing for the transition that is obviously going to happen down Kickapoo, whether it's C1, C2, or C3? You know, in the past, there's, there are, there are easements and, I mean, just physical space between the properties. Is it best practices to try to maintain that, or do we need to take into consideration fencing and height of buildings and lighting, I mean, some of the other things that you've talked about here in order to make that happen?
Right, I, I think in this particular case, these lots are, are well-suited for commercial development, although they are a little bit small, they're distinctly different from the residential property to the west in terms of size, they're significantly larger. Obviously, they front on a major arterial, Kickapoo Street. So you, you, those residential properties, I think, may be to a certain extent accustomed to, to non-residential activity with, with the busy street and the noise and sounds and light that that, that, that comes with that. So in some sense, and obviously it depends on the individual property owner, different people have different preferences, but you know, I, sometimes a building like this can, can block some of that light and some of that sound from Kickapoo on neighboring properties. We do pay close attention to the exterior lighting and the security lighting that they have on their perimeter because, because it abuts residential. Just make sure that it's, that it's oriented towards, towards the ground and that we don't have light trespass onto adjacent property. City code does require site-proof fencing. City code would allow for a, a taller building than is proposed here. In this particular case, we have a single-story automotive parts building. I don't have the, the building permits, I don't know the exact height, but it's, it would be typical, and I don't think it'd be any higher than what's, than the existing O'Reilly's on Harrison Street. And so, and you know, in some regards, what's proposed is less intense than what could be constructed in the C3. The parking is, the majority of the parking is oriented in, between the building and Kickapoo Street. So hopefully you, you, those adjacent property owners won't have that, that issue with, with a lot of traffic and noise and, and lights. There are, there are no, there are no, no parking spots that, that are, that directly would cause light to shine into, into the residential property, except just doing, just during maneuvering. So in terms of best practices, I think, I, I think based on the confines of existing code, I think we're doing a pretty good job. I think in the future, as we, as we look at modifying the zoning code, we can, we can look at more, more options to provide restrictions where we need to. I mean, for example, this was proposed to be a significantly taller building, or if it was going, if the parking was going to be oriented differently, if there was more impact. Right now, we don't have a lot of tools other than just for you guys to deny a permit. We don't have a lot of, or a rezon, we don't have a lot of tools to, to condition it. So, and, and those are some things that we are looking at. We're also looking at increased landscaping requirements. Think whenever you have commercial next to residential, landscaping certainly helps, helps, a fence is nice, but a, but a, you know, large trees that, that grow over time provide, provide even more visual blockage and, and sound attenuation.
Justin, do they still allow hedge in place of a fence as a barrier?
We do, but it has to be so dense that most people still just do a fence. Or they'll do a fence in combination with some, some smaller hedging that will grow up over time. But yes, if, if an individual wanted to, they could, they could, they could plant a six-foot high or higher hedge that, that would be very densely spaced, and, and that would meet code as well.
Now, when you say dense, are you talking about where you couldn't see through it, or it's six or eight feet thick, or where?
I, I, I'm talking about so you couldn't see through it.
That's sometimes preferred, three, and I brought that up. And you said it was required for fencing, and so I wanted a clarification on that. Because some people would really have to fence, or want to hedge.
And in this particular case, the, you know, of course, some of the neighbors to the west do have privacy fencing. And so some fencing here, although it meets code, could be redundant.
I guess the concern was just simply that seven and a half, potentially that seven and a half foot hole in the interior of the space. And without a, you know, any diagram in our stuff, I don't know whether the fences are property line or easement line.
Right, right, as proposed, it is on the property line. Now, the.
Oh, I'm talking about on the, the other side.
The, the other side, it, it does appear like the, the fences there are along the easement line.
Easement, okay, so there is a, I think that sounded like the concern was the dead space potentially between the two.
I have enough for everyone, we just got that late today.
Madam Mayor, does that answer your question? Because I know I've had several, several discussions with commissioners about metal buildings, intensity of use. You know, I think from our perspective, Justin's right, we're using the tools that we have available to us now to the best of our ability, but you know, I've had several conversations with you guys about the intensity they uses and metal buildings and things like that. And Kickapoo Street is very much a street that's in transition. For years and years, it's been residential, there've been few pockets where there've been some commercial-type properties, and now we're seeing ice machines and O'Reilly Auto Parts coming up, and we're seeing that, that all develop. And I mean, I guess, I guess to, to use a little saying, you know, here in Oklahoma, sales tax is king, so we're always looking for, for ta, sales tax generating businesses to come into our city because that's what pays the bills. But when we go through our, our zoning and land use process, the update of our comp plan, there are some other techniques that we can use that can soften that transition on Kick, on Kickapoo Street.
And I think my, no, my question was more like, is it a best practice to make something like this that is an easement, to make it a dedicated right-of-way instead of just an easement? I mean, even on this, there's a trash pad that, that now could be seven and a half feet from someone. We have had situations further south on Kickapoo where that's an issue, and it's a restaurant, and the trash is right next to someone's house because of where their house is located on their, on their lot. And, and so I don't know, besides the, the buffering that, that we have been talking about, there is a, there is an easement in this place, and there's a visible one from a certain point, but if it's not a right-of-way, they can build in it to, because their property line contains that easement, build in it, put a fence on it.
Pavate.
Up to, pavement.
Well, if they do.
And that was just my concern.
The problem is if they build on it or, and are cemented in or concreted in or asphalted in, if somebody needs in there to work on that line, they tear it up, and they're not responsible to replace it because it's not.
Because they're on top of it, yes, yes.
And in terms of dumpster proximity to other locations and things like that, we can have discussions with that with some development techniques, like I mentioned. I would think that in terms of the right-of-way acquisition out there would be costly for the city to get in terms of keeping it off of other, we're pretty fortunate in our city that we have a lot of rear drives so that, that, that we have access to utilities and things like that, we just don't in this particular case.
I just didn't know if that was a, that was a recommended practice. And this is just their site drawing at this time?
And this is a stock building, but it appears that it's all, has a brick facade all the way around it?
It, it does have a facade. There is somebody representing O'Reilly's here who can clarify exactly, but I, I do know that the front facade, at minimum, the facade for the front's Kickapoo will be, will not have a metal, it, it, we'll, we'll have a, an aesthetically pleasing facade of either brick or, or some type of stucco or, or other material.
Probably, well, similar to the one they just built there a couple of years ago. Same, all of, you know, the one half now, the end, and it's, all of them are just like. But one, but Commissioner Winteringer, I've discussed this before, about a metal building having some kind of a decorative front. And or anything visible there.
Boy, at minimum, I'd like to see it on both sides, myself.
Yeah. But anyhow, so it's more than, more than just a metal building or broken panel or trim or something like that.
If I were living in residential like west of this, that trash pad, I'm not going to bring in trucks early in the morning. And they pick those metal things, dumpsters up, and they make a heck of an noise. I don't know that I would like to suggest any, I would have someplace a little further away from that's right up against.
I think they'd be willing to do that, and we can, staff can certainly work with them to accomplish that.
All right, we're still in the public hearing. Anybody have any questions of Justin still? Anyone else, would you like to? Okay, yes, come on up. Yeah, the public hearing's still open.
I'm with O'Reilly Auto Parts. This is a picture of my local store with the bricks on it, if you'd like to see it or what it looks like.
I think we just have a, a drawing, a rendition in here, but.
See, the front of it's brick.
Can you tell us your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Alan Riddle, I live on.
Okay, Alan Riddle.
This is Alan Riddle.
This is Alan, uh, I think you do whatever else you want for a building, it's anything else.
Okay.
Yeah, you gonna keep the other store open?
Oh, yeah.
I live on the south side of town, so I can put them in.
It'll be open. Do you think else?
No, thank you. Yes, sir, come on.
Did I ask another?
Come on up.
I'm still just a little unclear where O'Reilly is going to put their fence, whether it's going to be seven and a half feet from mine or 15 feet over. I located the front pin on my property, and I measured to the back fence 128 feet. And my plot here says it should be 135. When I go on over to that pin, that's where my yard ends evidently, according to this right here. And if O'Reilly is going to put a fence in, it looks to me like he ought to honor seven and a half feet on the other side of the pin also.
That, yes, sir, that was a discussion that we were having, and it, and it looks like they can put a fence seven and a half feet from yours on that pin. Is that correct? That is the property line?
They can do that. Okay. Because everybody's fence, right now, our backyard, is seven, a little over seven feet from the center of that easement area.
Well, the good news is whenever they have to get in that easement or do some work on utility lines, they won't tear your fence up. Now, if O'Reilly sets theirs back on the property line, they have seven and a half feet of easement in there, then they can tear their fence up.
Because those gas meters are out there seven and a half feet from my fence line, so something's going to have to give. Thank you.
Yes, I understand, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, I will close the public portion, or the public hearing portion. Any other discussion or questions? Or a motion?
Move to approve, I'm sorry.
This is just rezoning only.
This is rezon only. Move to approve.
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Sims and a second by Commissioner Harrod. Once, now, once the plat comes in, can there be other conversations about where things are located?
We can, in this particular case, it may not be a plat, since it's already part of a, part of existing plat. We're going to have to get that right-of-way dedication, which will come to the commission. And what I could do is, I'd be happy to keep the commission informed and provide copies of the plan as they come out of our building permit. Have to, to address that in a, in a future reading or in a, provide you an update.
Their, their layout when they, okay, okay. Anybody else have any other concerns or questions? Read the ordinance, please.
This is an ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, to wit, lot six, lot two, College View addition to the city of Shawnee. Lot six, lot two, College View addition to the City of Shawnee, Howard County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof. Res zoning said property from R1, single-family residential to C3 automotive, commercial and recreation district, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number seven, consider Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund lump sum payment from divined benefit plan and refund of contributions from the divined contribution plan for Joe Panio. Puno, all right. It's your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Yep, a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Collier and a second by Commissioner Smith. Call roll, please.
Collier?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number eight, consider an ordinance relating to water and sanitary sewer rates.
Madam Mayor, during the budget process, the city commissioners identified that when we adopted the water rates, the intent of the commission was to have those increases begin in November. When the former city attorney put the ordinance together, we put it together with it beginning in July, I think naturally because that's only our budget year. However, that's when most of our customers also have their higher water bills for water use during the summertime. So during the budget process, the city commissioners identified they'd like to amend the ordinance to what it originally was intended to be, which was November 1st. So that is what this request is for.
So that modification is made for all of these water and sewer and in-town and out-of-town and all of those different instances? So the current period was extended. The new period starts November 1st, goes for a year, and then the last increase then is scheduled for November of 2013. November 1st, 2013, I think.
I think so, yes.
Right, so that, that keeps that annual rate at the November date, okay. That's what I understood through all of that, too.
That would apply for 2012 and 2013, November 1st of each of those years.
Yes, okay, okay.
Well, that, on our information in our packet, we have this, November 1st, 2013 is the same amount as November the 1st, 2012.
But the gallon, it shouldn't, 10 cents a gallon, or 10 cents a category more.
The base.
Twenty-five, thirty-one, four, thirty-five.
Are you on commercial alert?
Maybe pull it up. What page are you on, do you know?
I don't know.
136.
143.
Of your own commercial.
It looks like the base rate stays the same, but the, the.
Incremental gallons.
The increase goes in the next, like, the thousand to four thousand goes up by a dime. The four thousand to a million goes up by a dime. But the base rate remains the same. For the November 2012 and the November 2013 rates.
There's, I apologize, there, I have found, I didn't expect, I'm looking at these, this is the November 1, 2012 till June 30, 2013, and that should be to October 2013. And the next one should be October 2014.
Right.
Did you see, what page is that on?
All of them, well.
No?
143.
No, some of them are.
No, some of them are right.
The, the first part should be.
Those are.
But it's on.
Those are right.
Those two on the next to the last page are just wrong. They just didn't get changed.
June, July to July.
They're right elsewhere, but they're wrong right there.
So what page are you on, Mary Ann?
The next, the same one you were on, the next to the last page where there is no change. From November 1, 2012, it says, it says to June 30, 2013, that should be to October 30, 2013. But.
On page 141?
143, I think.
143, the next to the last page of the ordinance, if you're, I'm looking at the hard copy, but that's 143. The, and the, and I don't know, I can't tell you, but the November 1, 2012 and the November 1, 2013 are identical.
Yes.
And I don't know if you meant for them to be or not, I can't do that. Because I'm not looking at the old one.
That's, that's what I was trying to clarify, because we didn't have the old one in here, but that would be another 20 pages, and then it's hard to compare when you're doing everything electronically.
And I also noticed that on page.
See, that one's wrong.
I think it's 136, yeah, where it starts, commercial. Um, it may be 137. It only goes to October 31, 2013 and does not have a 2013 to 2014.
So do we need to defer this and have it cleaned up?
It's just proved, you know, how many times you look at it, when they get like this, you can miss one. We, we need to, in approving this, we need to fix the one where the numbers are wrong, which is section three. In section three. If the other one is wrong and we need to add it, we can come back and do that, that's easy. But we do need to fix that last one, but I don't know, again, I don't know if that rate is supposed to change or not.
Can we just table this to the next meeting?
Might be better.
I'd also like to know why the, we only go zero to 1,000 gallons, 1,001 to 4,000, and there's nothing more?
That's the way, huh?
That's the way the coordinator set up.
We don't sell more than 4,000.
That's because we're in the sewer part.
Well, it's the same on, I think, on the.
No, the water part goes to 1 million, 2 million, and more than 2 million.
But that's out of the city limits, is that right? You know, inside the city limits.
Section 3 is sewer inside, uh-huh.
And you'd never have more than 4,000 gallon of discharge? Don't know.
I don't know. We took the existing ordinance and changed the dates, is all we did, and apparently we didn't quite get that done right.
I move we table this to the next meeting.
Second.
Right. Motion by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Winteringer to defer this to the next meeting to make the changes necessary. Call roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Excuse me, aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item number nine, acknowledge sales tax report received July 2012.
Well, this budget year started out well. Sales tax were up $61,000, and I just, sorry, just popped it.
Just lost it?
Yes, just, there we go. Or 4.49% over last year's. And over what we had budgeted, if you remember correctly, we budgeted 2.5% over last year, we're up almost another 2%. And compared to July of 2011, we were up 85,000 or 6.41%. So for the whole, for the month of July, we received $1,422,363. It'll be interesting to see after the rodeo how the sales taxes.
Thank you very much. Item number 10, presentation on status of Kickapoo Street widening project. Is this from your meeting today?
Do what? Yeah, I just passed out earlier four pages of spreadsheets kind of showing what we have been required to obtain at ODOT's request. At May 3rd, they appeared with us and had all these revised easements and corrected easements that we were to get resigned and property owners to revalidate. We had accomplished most of that, and then we, they came up again on May 23rd with an additional list of items for us to get. And what this sheet here shows is what we and my staff have been doing the last six, seven weeks, obtaining all this information. And I'm glad to report that we hand-delivered all this stuff to ODOT Right Of Way Division this afternoon around 2 o'clock. And the staff member, Michael Ludi, he stayed with the ODOT individual, and they went over all the items, file by file, line item deletion by deletion. And we have pretty much satisfied everything that we are required to get at this time. I thought it was going to take several days for them to do their review, but because a staff member was up there present with them, they went over it this afternoon. We were told previously in May when ODOT came up that if we submitted our stuff, it would be 60 days from the time we submitted our stuff and cleared. And apparently, it's been pretty much cleared this afternoon that within 60 days, there'd be a bid letting. My staff, Michael Ludi, got back around just before 5:00, so I haven't had, we didn't have time to call all the people at ODOT to confirm all this. But tomorrow morning, I'll be on the phone with local government to try to set some actual dates to where I can actually come back and report some concrete dates of when they're going to let, when it's going to be open bids, and when the project would be awarded, so.
So based, based on your understanding, 60 days from today?
60 days from the time we, from the time we've submitted the stuff, yes.
Bid letting.
And one of the items on the spreadsheet that, the last thing we need to get, but this as a caveat, is on page two there, if you see down below on parcel 69, which is actually the Pat Sparkman Gas Station condemnation, they're, they're in kind of a reddish tint color, it says ODOT is trying to get with EST to change the right of way plans. We had requested months and months ago for the right of way plans to be changed on that one parcel because the original, original plans from a long time ago showed the alley being constructed there. But long since that point, we have closed the alley and we have redlined the plans to where the curb goes across it. So we're not really needing that site triangle piece. And EST has never corrected the right of way plans to reflect that. The easements we have obtained, or the easements that we have given Mary Ann to file in condemnation, reflects the correct easements that we're needing to get, so. But ODOT Right Of Way just needs that shown on the plan, so that's the last thing I note that they would have to get. Now, the other item on the second sheet, on the third page, where we acquired all the easements from all the property owners to get them resigned, there, there's one there that's in red, the parcels 71 and 74. Now, we have inquired of ODOT last week because we thought it was originally just a correction easement on this one, where, you know, it didn't close within a foot or so. But actually, this is one where the surveyor thought if the property owner owned more property than what his actual deeds show. So our opinion was, there's no way we can, you know, if he doesn't sign, and this individual has not been, he's been cooperative, but it's been a long time in trying to get him to sign. And our point would be that if he fails to sign, there's no one to really sue condemnation because his deed doesn't show he owns this property. And ODOT's agreed with us, and they have, today had relented and said that we, what we have as far as 71 and 74, the original easements are satisfactory, so we're clear on that. So I'll get on the phone tomorrow morning and track down local government division, Shannon Shefford, and try to set some tentative dates or get dates from him of when we can actually proceed with the project. So it's good news, the tunnel is, I can see light there, I really can, I mean, it's, we're done with it.
I have a question on this closed alleyway, is that on the north side? That Sparkman property?
Yes, it is. Well, there's already an alley there, we have since closed part of it. And the reason why is because also because it just wasn't going to be effective to put an alley approach right there in the middle of the intersection with University Drive. So that's long since been changed.
I was just curious, I was just curious if it was on the east side or on the north side of the.
It's on the north side and on the east side of Kickapoo though. Okay.
My question is probably for Mary Ann, as part of this Kickapoo Street, where are we with receiving our funds from Dr. Stewart on the corner?
It's still, I was, I'm on it.
But that's like $160,000.
It is like $160,000.
The Shawnee Animal Hospital.
Any interest on that, or is a lot on West?
No.
No? So, the longer he waits, the better off he is.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, it's my fault, I need to be pursuing it more aggressively than I need.
It's been a year and three days since we got the verdict.
Okay. All right, anything else on that project? Okay. Item number 11, discuss and consider directing staff to begin financing process for budgeted projects.
Madam Mayor, since this request was asked to be put on the agenda last week, I've done some calling around to talk to our bond financing council, and I wanted to kind of share the information that he and I talked about, as well as some of the agenda items that were on the agenda earlier tonight. Reasons to finance now, interest rates are at all-time lows. They really are. They're, they're expecting, although they can't, you know, guarantee it, that if we do bank-qualified financing before November, particularly before our national election, interest rates would be quite low. The reasons not to finance now are multiple, but they kind of come together. $2 million in remaining bank-qualified financing is all we have left because we let OBU have $8 million of it earlier this year. Two separate sets of closing costs, meaning if we, if we have the tower project that we need to do, and we have the pool project we need to do, we'll actually have two sets of closing costs because we'll be doing a million and a half or two now, and then we'll be doing four and a half or five and a half, you know, next, next time. But that qualified with what Alan and the bond finance counselor telling me is, is because of the interest rate is low now, and it may go up after November, there's a little bit of a risk that you're taking by doing it after November because the presidential election rates are so low, they anticipate, although they've said before that they would never go lower, they keep going lower, but after the election, potentially, they could go up, so that could, that could offset some of the closing costs. Pool project, we're not ready. We just, commissioners just gave me the direction today to go ahead with a committee. I'm expecting that that's going to take about three months to do. And by the way, both on the tower project and on the pool project, we have already set aside monies in our budget, so we could on a cash basis hire architects and engineers right now to do the projects without having to actually do the bricks and mortar just yet. And the time, the tower project, we need to hire a consultant, and we need to get an FCC license before we can actually put that tower up. Don's put together a little timeline, I don't know if he provided it for commissioners.
I do not.
He does not?
No.
It's just, it's just a real quick timeline of what he thinks is going to happen with the tower stuff and how long it's going to take. And I don't know that we've ever really seen something like this that actually lays it out for us and tells you when we're going to have to do it. But he thinks that probably in the first quarter of next year is when we'll actually get the FCC license, so.
Thank you.
That pretty much covers, covers my comments. We'll be happy to answer any questions, but, you know, I mean, certainly if the city commission allows us to go ahead and, instructs us to go ahead and begin the financing of it, that takes some time, too. There are really two options, you know, I mean, we can, traditionally, what, what our bond counselor are telling us is you go ahead and you design, and then you engineer, and you cost out a project, and then you go forward with the project to them, and then they'll, probably in 30 to 45 days, they'll come back. That way, you know what the project's going to cost, or close to as you can, and then you go out and finance it. So you have the projects all ready and you know how much they're going to cost. Or you can go ahead and finance them and say, okay, our pool's going to be $3 million, and our towers are going to be $3 million, and so we're going to finance $6 million. And if it ends up being $6,500,000, then we only have two projects at $3 million apiece. So, you know, I guess, I guess we're here for questions, but given those, given a lot of those things, I think our recommendation would be that, that there's not, we're not in a real rush to actually finance. finance the projects.
I think our concern was information about, on the communication towers, being able to secure a state bid or the costs, I guess, that go along with some of these items. And to, and to just try to move forward with something that was a safety item as opposed to a nice-to-have and not to, not to drag it out. I mean, if it's something that the, that the items are out there and it's something that we, that we need to purchase, then, then I'm all for doing what we need to do to get those going. Maybe Don will explain some of this, but it looks like we maybe have some other steps that we need to do before we proceed with some of the upgrades for communications. And again, communications was, for me, one of the priorities. And even the $2 million would get us started on, on some of the replacement parts of the capital that we needed to purchase.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and I appreciate that sentiment. The, as the city manager explained, there are a couple of activities that need to take place prior to actually ordering equipment to look at, putting up at that site. And the first one is to hire a consultant to help us with the licensing process and the coverage analysis process. The frequencies that we use in the 800-megahertz spectrum are reused across the country. So you'll have a set of frequencies assigned in this part of the state of Oklahoma. They'll be reused again in the northeastern part of the state and the western parts of the state. And that's the common practice across the country throughout that entire spectrum. And so we need to make sure that frequencies are available. What we had asked for in putting the project together, the desired outcome would be to have a 10-channel system. We may not be able to actually get full 10 channels. We may be able to get seven or some fraction in between there. So that's why we need to have, go through that process and actually get the license because that will tell us numbers of transmitters and that kind of associated equipment that we need to get as well. And then, and then the issue on the coverage map is to make sure that we get the optimum location to get the coverage that we desire for that. And so that's why we want to go through those two steps, get that engineering analysis, get that licensure in place, and then be able to move forward next year after, after the first of the year to go forward with that.
Okay, so let me ask you, is there anything holding you up or moving on?
No, we, as the city manager indicated, we have identified funds already in the, in the maintenance and operation budget to proceed forward with those, with those activities. So we can get that done and get that in place, ready to go.
And with that being the funds that we set aside for debt service for this, I mean, knowing that, that we don't have the bond in place right now, we would begin paying the full debt service this year. But we did put aside the full amount so we can start using those funds to do what we need to do to get started.
Absolutely. So in essence, we are starting the project. We're just not buying the equipment. So we don't need the full amount to buy the equipment yet until we get that defined.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Because of City of Shawnee, we're trying to gather in?
Exactly.
A bunch of people involved. Does that make any difference?
Absolutely. And that's the other thing that I did not put on here, but that's, that's something that we have talked about and want to continue to pursue. And as, as we're doing the, the engineering part of it, again, we want to look at potential partners who will be utilizing the system and what can they bring to the table. And then we can put together that financial plan before we go forward next year and we'll actually see how much we actually do need at that point. So yes, that is, is one of the things in the mix of putting that together.
Do you have any ideas?
All I've done is I have the list of, of all of, all of the public safety entities that are utilizing or potentially utilizing the system. We're going to be inviting them to a meeting. As, as I had mentioned previously, there are a number of issues related to communications county-wide that need to be addressed. And so again, it's bringing everybody back, those users back together in the room, making sure they all understand where we're at and have a common framework and financial plan to go forward, together and develop that out of, out of that group. And so we'll be sending out that invitation shortly to those people to get them in.
So I'm curious, you've got on, it looks like all of them, but on the front page, page one of two?
Yes, sir.
Obtain radio license from the FCC and it appears that that takes six months.
Yes, sir. When you do the engineering analysis, it has to be a coordinated process and it goes to FCC. It may be shorter, but, but on average, that's what it's taken, other entities to get their licensure.
Okay, and six months for the engineer. But then you've got, after that first six months, you've got another six months to obtain financing.
And that was just my, it obviously could always take less than that. I'm just plugging that in as a number that, that.
Well, so if we have financing in place?
If they have financing in place, that will, that will back that, that across.
By nine months?
By nine months, exactly.
Okay, so in theory, we could be installing equipment the first of January?
Absolutely, if we get everything in place, ready to go for that. But, so.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just, one thing has to lead to another, and so that's why I just separated them out along that line. Obviously, as with any construction project or any other project management, as you get ahead of schedule, that shifts your schedule back on the calendar.
It just seems like that's a four-year plan, really, to get it up and running, if I'm reading that right. Maybe not four. That's one, two and a half years.
Two and a half years.
Commissioners and Don, please, if you want to talk about the, the equipment won't even be available at some point until?
Exactly. For, for the retrofit of our existing site, the site that's here at City Hall right now, the, the equipment is not even available to be ordered from Motorola until the third quarter of 2013. There, it's still in research and development process. So we'd have to wait that long in order to do that before we can even begin to order the equipment.
So is there sufficient money put aside right now to handle your first steps? Let me rephrase that, knowing that we have another project that we were talking about that kind of, you know, blew its gasket today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I believe that there is.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We don't want to forget that we probably will have, hopefully, we'll have some money out of one cent sales tax that we've set aside for the Kickapoo project. And hopefully, it'll come in under projected bids like so many of our other projects have lately. So we'll have some available there to help pay for the engineering and so forth.
You won't know that until Kickapoo is complete, though.
No, until Kickapoo is bid. I've never seen John cry with the issue of a change order yet, so I don't think that's going to happen. I'm sorry, Tom.
Just a correction on that. We're not letting this project.
That's right. Yeah, yeah.
You know, I appreciate the city manager's comments on that this is a financing issue, but to me, it's more of a satiation. So regardless of what the interest rate is, I want to move forward with as fast as possible. And it's great, I'm glad the interest rates are down, but that's not my biggest concern is, is the protection of people and property.
Well, we actually don't want to just have this decision to make, but we also have a decision whether it'd be more economical to refinance the existing that we did at the expo and the library roof and things like that and spread that over a longer term so that we're not hamstringing the streets and construction and new construction like that. So there's more than just, there's more to it than just going out and soliciting bids and so forth. Because to me, I want some hard figures before I go out for, you know, for a price on the pool and/or the towers. I mean, I think you need hard data before you make those decisions.
Yeah, it's probably not typically done like we did the financing in December. That is one way to do it. I'm not advocating that we follow that, that plan every time. My concern was just that we are moving forward as fast as we can, especially on the communication issues. And if financing is holding that up, then we need to be reviewing those options. $2 million or whatever it is can get us a lot further along than where we are right now. And I want to ensure that on my watch, I've done everything I could to keep the citizens and the officers and everybody in emergency management safe. And not just ignoring it, waiting for someone else to make that decision. If we need to make that decision and get going, bring it on. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, the information we have tonight is it's going to be the third quarter of 2013 before the equipment's available. So that's a year and a half or at least a year away.
Okay, anything else?
Is there anything that can be done in the interim on the water tower, which is basically, I think, where we've proposed the antenna, a repeater of some nature or something that is, something that could bolster the signal in that part of town? That's a modest investment.
Really not aware of anything, shy of putting up seven additional repeaters that will help bolster that signal because of the, of the way that the technology works, when a police officer or a user keys their radio, they're not always assigned to the same channel. The controller for the, the site, for the system assigns them to a channel. So you have to have all seven channels at each site. So you'd have to put up seven repeaters. You couldn't just, you would limit yourself.
But there's not a relatively inexpensive approach that allows?
There's nothing that will just, will bolster, bolster the one signal and otherwise repeat it, so, yeah.
So I mean, we're talking about the same money for seven years?
You're really looking at, talking, that's exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything else, guys? Okay, we'll move along then. Thank you. Item number 12, presentation and discussion of documents prepared by staff concerning a trust indenture for the CBB.
Some time ago, after the committee had a meeting, I was asked to just draft some document that would transfer administration to an independent body. I did one with the trust indenture. It's, it is pretty much the form, trust indenture, the general powers are from the statutes, have the same powers as the SMA and the SCCDA. Prepared it for discussion. The committee's not met and talked about it. I have circulated it. Commissioner Harrod asked me a question or two about it, but I haven't heard from anybody else. It's, it's not a recommendation, it's a response to that request. It's, it's just one way to do it. Within it, there are several options. Most of those appear in Article 7. I kind of put in some placeholder language, some alternatives, some ideas for you to use as a discussion point. Another option, other than a statutory trust, would be some kind of 501(c) group, if, if you're talking about an independent group. Of course, the other options are to, you know, keep the present system and, and adjust that contract because it's woefully inadequate. I think everybody agrees with that. It just doesn't have, it hasn't, it hasn't kept up with the growth of the program. So that's what that is.
So this is a sample document that you drafted for the committee?
Yes.
The committee of three commissioners?
Yes.
That's what that is. And y'all have not met since then? Okay.
I think we all agree that there's going to have to be some adjustment either in the contract or some other, some other method. And by placing, by placing a board or some trustees in charge of it, then that makes them, not like the airport authority or something, you know, someone else that, where somebody else is responsible. They, I mean, they've not, to my knowledge, don't have a copy of this or, there's been no reaction from the committee. I do have some questions and, like I said, I sent those to Mary Ann. But we haven't done anything with it, we haven't met with the officers or chamber or anybody else to discuss the potential of it.
One question that he asked that I want to clarify, and that is, in Article 7, Section 1, the trustees, it says nine, it can be any number. But those, those three things are in the alternative. Either a resident of Shawnee or within the Shawnee Public Schools District, or an owner and/or operator and/or employee of a business within the city or the public schools. Then it'd be all three of those things, but any one of those things. Again, the discussion point, but those are in the alternative. They're not meant to be cumulative.
Right, right, right.
So what does it take to get a final draft of this agreement to, for action?
Committee had to meet and that.
Well, if the committee has to meet, y'all have to decide what you want and give instructions.
So we can individually send any thoughts?
Comments.
Comments to you and we can get a final draft?
You could send comments to me and I can bring it back and you can discuss it, neither approve it or not. But, I mean, you know, if I get five different ideas, it'll be hard to.
The people that are going to be operating under this need some response and some opportunity to respond to it, and their attorney probably.
Well, you know, one of, one of the, the kind of big issues would be whether it's going to operate like the airport authority, which is one where y'all are the trustees and there's an advisory board, or whether it's going to operate like the SCCDA, which is pretty much, it's independent in terms of the board, although it contracts with the city for employees, or whether it's going to be completely independent and has its own employees. So, I mean, you know, kind of how many trustees or, or if they're not trustees, advisory board, and what they do is, is the easy part. The three-year terms, that's the easy part, but the, I mean, just kind of that, that basic premise of which, what's it going to, what's it going to look like? Is it going to be the Shawnee Municipal Authority that has no advisory board, that's just you? The Shawnee Airport Authority, that's you with an advisory board? The SCCDA, that's somebody else with city employees? Or the fourth thing, which would be, it's just out there?
I think it needs to look like the SCCDA. Which is what?
That's my first thought.
Which would be an independent board. Basically, that would be, as I would understand it, essentially a more, some version of today's advisory, tourism advisory.
Right, yes.
Some version of that would do the governance, but the employees would be city employees.
Yes. So if we could steer that direction and then take feedback from commissioners and hone this down a little bit, I think it would be good.
I can do that. If that's your instruction, that's what y'all want.
Commissioners, I mean, you, you had the committee in place. I think the committee needs to meet and make a recommendation back with the city commission.
How long ago did we appoint that?
Oh, it's been, I don't think they've met since probably either late winter, early spring, you know? I think.
What we were hoping to do was get responses from this, and we hadn't got any responses from it. So we can't meet again until we got some responses from the commissioner or anybody else, right?
The, the CBB met this morning. Myself and several staff members were there, and it was brought up during administrative reports. They did have a copy of this. And the conversation started to go the wrong direction because they felt like, a couple of the members were just saying that this is a final document and all of that, all of that type of discussion. And I had to stand up and say that the committee hasn't met, that it was, staff was instructed by the committee to put this document together. We haven't gotten any feedback back from the committee yet. And that's, and that's exactly how it's been left.
But the committee is not providing feedback. I think the commission as a whole needs to provide feedback.
I didn't provide feedback.
Okay, but the others, and I think it's, we need to move forward.
I understand. I mean, we, we have some issues there that, that we definitely need to address with property particularly, and things that commissioners have shared that are really very near and dear to staff. are really very near and dear to staff as well. But I hesitate to, to rush this thing and not get it done right. And the committee hasn't met. Maybe if the, if the police is the commission.
Let's have a special commission meeting. Let's have a special commission meeting to address it. I, you know, I was reading something as I was filing some stuff over the weekend, and incoming Commissioner Agee made this quote, "Public funds can only be appropriated for public purpose and must be used in furtherance of a government function as opposed to benefiting private industry or groups." Attorney General opinion 98-25. I think we've got, I don't know that it's criminal, but I think we've got a serious problem with looking at financials, how the financial statements are co-mingled. The asset is actually shown as an asset entitled to the Chamber of Commerce, which clearly is against the state constitution, or at least Agee's opinion of 98-25. We can't just leave that idle. I think it's, we've, basically what's happened is, public funds, tax dollars, have been used to buy real estate and for the benefit of a private entity, which is the Chamber of Commerce, to the chain of $500,000. And I just don't think we can sit here and look at that any longer. As, I mean, it's against the law.
Well, according to our past attorney, it's not against the law, because I went straight to John Cannavan when I read in the paper that they purchased the property, and he said that that's not against the law, and it was all right to do that, so.
Do you have an opinion, Mary Ann, off the cuff?
I, it's, we're not wondering like it's an, it depends. If we, if we had the right contract, I think it's okay to spend that money for things that are used in furtherance of the purpose. Right now, it's a piece of ground, with as I understand it, no particular plan, except that it might get sold someday, or maybe someday something would happen. Based on what I know, and the situation as it is now, I certainly think that that is the city's property. I don't care who title, whose title it's in.
Well, that needs to be clarified.
And I believe, and statements have been made to me by folks within the chamber that agree that they took title in the chamber for, as a matter of convenience, because they actually went and borrowed the money and pledged their, the monies from their contract, and they would have taken the hit if we were to fail to contract. I think that's probably where it kind of jumped the track there. There was probably a, a better way to do it when they did it that way. I, I don't think there's any long-term problem with them deeding it, either deeding it over or paying for it. I think they understand that it's paid for with public money and whatever.
Paid for by public money, and it, and therefore you would think that it is an asset of the citizens.
Well, this, this all gets very complicated. You know, the Tourism Advisory Board is created by a series of resolutions. Just finding out who that is is a problem, because that really ought to be done by ordinance. That, that's really an arm of the city. The Tourism Advisory Board is an arm of the city. And when they're interacting with the chamber, which provides the service, they're really there on your behalf, on the city's behalf. And over time, it's kind of, that board has become more of a function of, quote, the CBB, which is coming out of the chamber, rather than directly with the city. And I, I think that's one of those things that just happens. I don't think there's any bad intent on that. It just happens. So we need to kind of get a mindset work. And part of that's that, the contract. The contract needs to address things like, if money gets used to buy computers, who owns the computers, you know? Buy it office furniture, who owns the office furniture?
And there's language in this proposal, even though it's not firm, for those types of activities. Certainly, I mean, it, it talks about that.
Well, one of the problems is, if they still own that land, and the deed's transferred to the city, then the city has to pay the balance on it.
Which there's plenty of money in the CBB to pay it off today.
The city would pay it the same way it's been paid for so far, which would be out of the CBB tax money.
Right.
Those funds are. Yeah.
I mean, I assume that's how you'd put it. The revenue stream is there to pay for it.
The revenue stream is there. Right.
Was, was there any conversation back in prior commissions about how all this transpired, or was the city informed, or did just this just kind of happen? I'm just curious.
I serve on the, the Chamber Board of Commerce. Just by virtue of the position, the city manager, according to their bylaw, sits on that. And it happened really early, and I think I arrived here at the city in February, and I think it was March or April when, when it went on.
It was basically done when you got here.
It was, it was.
And that's what I said. I went immediately when I saw it. I had a patron ask me about it, so I went immediately to, to our attorney, sat down and talked to him about it. And I felt like, and I still do, that the property needs to be in the city of Shawnee's name. I've discussed that with Nancy. And once that property is paid for, once an agreement, a contract is made, and that's not a problem. Fair willing, I mean, that's a doable deal.
Well, it just needs to be done, needs to be started.
I mean, we don't need to go around here burning a bunch of bridges right now.
I'm not asking you to burn bridges. I'm, I'm seeing a problem that we've talked about for four years.
I haven't talked about it for four years.
Well, when we met at the retreat at Mr. Winteringer's, that was one of the key items that was talked about at that, so three years.
But anyhow, I agree with the city manager. I think we need to, the committee needs to get back together, and I think we need to meet with the, with the people involved in it and work out a solution. I don't think you need to just say, here it is, you're gonna operate under this contract, or this trust agreement, or whatever else. I think they need to have an input in. I don't have a problem with their organization. I don't have a problem with the job they're doing. They get all kinds of awards and everything else.
It's never been about that.
But it, but if you start messing with it, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But we can sit down and work, we can work together.
But this part of it is what's broke. The, the, the contract between the two entities, or the lack of a contract, and therefore, what do we have, what do we put in place? That's, that's what we're talking about. The relationship, the, the legal relationship.
But again, you need to sit down and work with that group. And I, my suggestion to agree with the city manager is that Billy and I and Pam, if Pam is out of country or out of state, or wherever she is, then Billy and I can meet with the attorney and go down and set up meetings with them, try to work our way through this. And we also need reaction from each one of the commissioners, which we haven't had.
I think what we have is a contract where, the CBB is the spinoff of an agreement we have with the chamber to manage those dollars. And so it's that key, that core agreement is, is sideways. It's a pretty vanilla agreement that was written in, whenever that was, 10 or 12 years ago, and is not specific in any call. And it's, you know, it's possible that that could be done. I think what's complicated, the issue, and it's unfair to all parties, is there are financial statements from the chamber, from the CBB, and that asset is shown, and the liability is shown, and it's, that's co-mingled, and that needs to be cleaned up post haste. That, you know, that, in my opinion, that is not an asset of the chamber, it's an asset of the CBB, or ultimately, the city. And that concerns me, that that's out there.
So as a resolution of this item, can the committee?
I think we could have a special commission meeting, and let's, let's vet it in public.
I disagree. I don't think that's where you need to vent it. I think you need to sit down and with the people and work out an agreement. I don't think you get anywhere by venting it in public. I think there's gonna be disagreements and so forth, and we need to work through those. And you already have a committee in place to do that.
So can we have a commitment from the two committee members here to get, to get on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Would you like to have our input on this before you?
Sure.
Okay.
Email them to the city attorney.
Please. Okay, okay. So noted. Anything else? Then you'll come back with a recommendation or other discussion. Okay, item 13, consider and approve granting the easement to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the reconstruction and widening of State Highway 102.
This item is for the widening of Highway 102 from I-40 south, eventually to Highway 9. The city owns property out there for the lake, just south of Belcher, for about a half mile. And on pages 171 is the beginning of it, the, ODOT had hired Universal Field Services to make their pitch to us as far as the letter of offer and meet with us and everything. And basically, really on page 173 and 174 is ODOT's official offers for the easements. And there's more than just one easement, there's a bunch of different parcels. I mean, it's like temporary construction easement, temporary drive easement, utility easement, permanent right-of-way easement. There's a bunch of them. But their total aggregate is, they're gonna offer $34,400 for the approval to granting of the easements here on the west side of 102. And there's not real good plot plans, but in your packet, we, we tried to give you the plot plan that they gave us. We have more detailed plans we could present that to the commission, but basically, just as we tell property owners when we meet with them for easements, that you're, this is what's, need to be acquired, and we give them the property rights brochures, and ultimately condemnation if they don't, don't suffice. So we think it's a fair, fair price. It, it meets with their appraisal. We had, we requested, they normally don't give the appraisals. We, we'd gotten the appraisal from them, and it's all in line, and it looks like a good, good deal. So we would recommend going ahead and granting of easements to the state of highway, state department.
Does this affect any of the leaseholders?
It, it does, but it's, as far as damages, driveways, gates, and stuff like that, that will need to be relocated, we got them to take us out of the equation. So ODOT's dealing directly with the leaseholders, and we'll need to get tenant releases from them before they can proceed with the project. And I understand they're ready to make offers to the, the leaseholders on that. There's like three of them, I think.
Yeah, how much does it, do you have any clue how much that eats up beyond the current fence line?
No, I don't. I do know when they first presented us the letters, the dollar amounts were a little bit more, but they, then they expected us to pay, pay the leaseholders, and I didn't want to get into that kind of, squabble back and forth, so we separated ourselves from it.
Well, several, I mean, I don't have a clue how much easement they're looking to add to that. Is it a 33-foot easement, or?
No, it varies. I mean, it, it varies from zero to about, to 22 feet, something like that.
About what?
About 22 feet.
Additional?
Yeah.
From the statutory easement?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not, I mean, there's some of those, there's a couple of those right there on 102 that are pretty darn.
I know that one of them has a gate that will need to be moved back about 12 feet, something like that. But, and then as far as the damages and stuff, is the gravel, the driveways that they have there, they'll, of course, when they remove the driveway, they'll put it back, but they'll pay him for that gravel that they're taking, so.
But I'm just thinking, the house itself is pretty damn close to the fence on 102, but maybe not within that distance, probably. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. We had a motion by Commissioner Harrod and a second by Commissioner Smith to approve staff's recommendation to accept the offer. Any other discussion? Call roll, please. Harrod?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14A, Harrison Street Planner Project, contract number COS-PW-11-06. Open, you have some, okay.
This item is a bid opening for what we were calling the Harrison Street Planner Project. This is one that's a landscaping project out on North Harrison, the first island south of I-40 there, just where you get to the VOTAC entrance and stuff. This is one that we attempted to bid out earlier this year, but because we didn't have a couple of notes in there about coordinating with the FAA and not getting ODOT down for the pre-bid meeting, we had to, had to rebid it. We didn't open bids at that time, we returned them. But first bid opened this time was from Parathon Construction out of Edmond, Oklahoma. Their bid was $101,620.94. Second bid opened was from Rudy Construction Company out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was $98,624.25. And the third bid opened was from Nash Construction Company out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was $121,241. And based on the quantities and items of work that was bid out, our engineering estimate was at $100,000. You know, we would ask that this item be deferred until the next meeting, we tabulate the bids, and also get with James Bryce to go over the project and the grants, and see where we can proceed from there. Maybe we could take the money we just got from the easements and put towards that, I don't know.
You negotiate that, will you?
Yeah.
Okay.
John, I'd like to question, question real quick. You said that starts right where the northern driveway is to VOTAC.
Yeah, right through that area. I think that's where the.
So if I'm coming out of collision works, I can't cross over here?
No, you'll be able to cross over.
I still can.
Oh, well, uh.
Their, their driveway is north of VOTAC.
If you can cross over today, I mean, we're not, we're not building any more island. We're just removing the concrete that's there and building some decorative slope walls and doing some planning details and some irrigation. But the actual island that's there today in place will remain there in place. It won't get bigger or larger or anything. So if they can cross over now, they'll be able to cross over after this project's over.
Yeah.
I was just getting a call up Google just to see.
The second kind of follow-up on that is, we're not gonna have high trees and stuff where we block crossover tracks coming in here.
No, they're, they're, they're gonna be low riders, low rider hedges, grasses and stuff like that. The "Welcome to Shawnee" sign will probably be the highest thing on this plan.
I have a motion by Commissioner Harrod to approve staff's recommendation to defer to the next meeting.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please. Harrod?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14B, Shawnee Library Reroof.
After reviewing the bids and submittals, staff recommends to award the contract to Mid-America Roofing and Construction out of Oklahoma City in the ultimate, alternate bid amount of $158,135. And our budgeted amount was $250,000 out of the third-party short-term note and bond refinance that the commission approved on November 14, 2011.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier.
Quick question, is that a white surface?
It's a white surface.
Okay.
Okay, call roll, please. Harrod?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. 14C, Bryan and Independent Streets Signulation Project, contract number
Okay, this item is a recommendation of bid award. We tabulated bids, and they're...
Your recommendation is actually in the next section for us this time.
Do what? So on page 202 through 203, or the tabulation, the bids received, we've received three bids. The lowest and best bid received was from Traffic Lighting, Traffic and Lighting Systems, and their bid was $98,562.62. and their bid was $98,562.60. And I'd point out, if you look at the bid tabs, the actual signal part of the project was $113,000. This project also includes widening Independence on the east side to allow for a left-turn lane. So we would go ahead and recommend the project to be awarded to Traffic and Lighting Systems in the amount of $198,562.60.
Okay.
Anybody else perceive any contacts about that?
One.
I got a couple. I don't know, I mean, I talked to John about it, maybe this lighting is a little premature.
We feel like it's good pre-planning. I mean, there's a four-way stop there on a major arterial strength.
I heard that explanation.
And the gentleman I talked with about it too, I think probably you talked with about it, he was concerned about the stopping unnecessarily because of the signal, and we had told him that it's going to be, you know, vehicle actuated with cameras and video detection. But some of the reasons he was saying, you know, he didn't want it would really justify removing the stop signs also, but he wasn't in favor of removing the stop signs. We stand by our recommendation.
You mean removing them on Harrison, removing them on the cross street on Bryan? Is that what you just said?
We wouldn't recommend removing them.
Okay.
No.
No, no.
Last time I voted against a stoplight or a stop sign, I got pissed.
Yeah, remember when?
It's hard to make.
They're on Lake Road and Leo. They're on Lake Road and Leo, I believe.
Yep.
So it's hard to make a vote against the stoplight. I don't like stoplights very hard.
And right now, as of 2000, about 2009 traffic counts that ODOT did for us out there, there's about 7,700 vehicles on Bryan Street each day, and we haven't done any recent ones since, you know, Windmill Ridge is built out and more bridges are built out, and then we've got Primrose coming on board. So, you know, the stop, the signalization is for the orderly movement of traffic through the intersection, so we believe it's necessary.
The secondary benefit really is like a staggered flow too for all the, for all the traffic north and south of there too that are trying to enter and exit onto Bryan Street.
Yes, I would say right now, you know, almost 100, well, if everybody's abiding by the stop sign, 100% of the traffic through the intersection has to stop. So with the traffic signal, we hope to reduce that amount to decrease unnecessarily delay in excessive use of fuel, that kind of thing.
Where the north and south traffic actually has more seconds to drive north and south and east and west? Is it like a 60-40? Because the traffic on Independence is not as great as it's going to be.
Right, we could look at that, yes. But it's going to be.
Do we get to have it included in that, or are we going to go by what? I'd like to have it about, you know.
60, 75, 25.
75, 25, something like that.
We'll take that under advisement.
I do go by the speed limit, just for the record, for people in the audience.
Okay.
So our recommendation is to award the project to Traffic and Lighting Systems.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to proceed with the bid.
A motion by Commissioner Smith to accept staff's recommendation toward the bid, okay?
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Thank you very much.
By the way, this is from last year's budget money. It was budgeted last, in last fiscal year, we budgeted $350,000, so this is coming quite a bit under what we had budgeted for, so.
Okay. Call roll please. Smith?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Herod? For the record.
I guess I'll vote for it. Aye.
Peterson?
You're okay?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Item 14D, Cool Bird Lane Hazard Mitigation Project, contract number COS-PW-11-09, award.
Okay, we received, this project is really basically just terracing the retaining wall that's out there at Cool Bird Lane and moving it back about six feet and lowering it to where you got better sight distance down Kickapoo when you come out at the intersection. We had received three bids on this project, and the lowest and best bid was from CP Integrated in the amount of $54,211.30. We would recommend awarding this project to CP Integrated in the amount of $54,211.30. We did have $75,000 budgeted for this project, and it's come under that. And this contractor is the same contractor we got currently working around town doing ADA ramps and some of the sidewalk stuff.
Will there be leftover blocks?
Be what?
Is there going to be leftover blocks on that deal?
Leftover blocks?
Retaining.
I don't think, I think we'll use everything in there.
What was that price again?
I don't think there'll be any leftover blocks.
And what's the timing for this project? Should we approve it?
I think, I don't have the contract in front of me, but I think it was a 90-day project, I'm not sure. It shouldn't take them very long to do it.
Move to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve by Commissioner Sims and a second by Commissioner Winteringer.
You can't want the blocks out, John.
Give us a bit of a.
Oh, they're reusing the blocks, they're just moving.
Moving them back.
Call roll please, fast, Donna. Sims?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Herod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14E, fiscal year 11/12 Rehab Asphalt Streets Projects, contract number COS-PW-11-10.
Okay, this is our maintenance-type project for asphalt streets whereby we will mill and mill down about an inch, inch and a half, and place back about two inches of asphalt after we've placed down a reinforced fabric for, to control the reflective cracking. We had four bids received in this project, and they are tabulated on your iPad.
218.
218, 220, somewhere in that area. Anyway, the lowest and best bid was from Nash Construction in the amount of $589,090. And staff would recommend going ahead and awarding this project to Nash Construction in the amount of $589,090. And I'd like to point out, this is a maintenance-type contract whereby, you know, we're bidding out the quantities of work, and we have identified streets on this, on this project to be milled and overlaid as MacArthur Street from Leo to MacArthur, Acme, Independence from Kickapoo Airport Drive, Independence Park to Broadway, 45th Street, a mile long from Kickapoo to Leo, and Bradley Street from Bryan to Center. We have kind of re-looked at Bradley Street, and it kind of might not really need to have that done, but we'll concentrate on the other streets first. If quantities are available, we'll take another look at Bradley Street or maybe add another street to it, maybe Kennedy or so. But if not, we'll just take whatever's left onto this contract and use it somewhere else. But Bradley between Bryan and Center, don't look all that bad.
What page is that located on?
Oh, I just got out of it.
What page is that located on in the iPad?
I thought it was 220. 219.
I just closed it.
Mine says 220, 219, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, it's your pleasure.
So moved.
All right, a motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Sims and a second by Commissioner Smith. Call roll please. Sims?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Herod?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14F, fiscal year 11/12 Rehab Concrete Streets Project, contract number COS-PW-11-11.
Okay, this project is basically our maintenance project for rehabbing concrete streets, removal and replacement of bad deteriorated crack panels or panels that have a lot of cracks in them that cause hazard to bicyclists and whatnot.
Somebody's bicycle tire would call in, yes?
We received four bids on this project, and they're tabulated in your iPad. I got them page 229. And the lowest and best bid was submitted from All Roads Paving in the amount of $387,409. And we've looked over the items and quantities and all the arithmetic and everything, all the math checks out, and we would recommend awarding this project to All Roads Paving in the amount of $387,409. And this is because of the same contractor that did our Beard Street south widening, so he's a pretty good contractor, does pretty good work.
Move to approve.
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Sims?
Second.
Yeah, come on. Seconded by Commissioner Winteringer.
Madam Mayor, if I may slip in here, you know, we have work on Independence that the Oklahoma Corporation Commission is hiring a contract for. It's been over a year, and we've been fiddling with this thing. Tomorrow, John and I have a meeting with them here at City Hall. Marion is going to make a contact with Oklahoma Corporation Commission, and the whole intent of our doing this street was to do it in conjunction with our contractors that are coming in to do the remediation for the fuel tank leak there at the intersection of Center and Independence, and they're not stepping up to the plate. So we're going to try and make sure that we get some progress on it.
But that would still keep Independence on the list to do it. You're just trying to coordinate the timing.
Really would like those two projects to.
Okay, that is the number one street for this.
We weren't wanting to close down really, an inconvenience to everybody on Independence twice.
I understand.
Because we wanted to do it all at the same time, but like Bryan says, they're kind of not ready to go with this project with the dig and replace, and we're going to meet with them tomorrow and discuss maybe some other methods that they might be able to do, see if, since they're passing this window of opportunity for us. Because we don't really want them to start when school starts.
Right, right. Okay. Call roll please. Sims?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Herod?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14G, demolition of 217 North Beard.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move we delay this demolition until we get a mold inspection to find out what kind of mold's in there, and if it can be eradicated, and then if it cannot be, then we can go ahead and proceed with the demolition. I sent out to all the commissioners eight items that I felt like that we hadn't looked at fully enough for the demolishes buildings. Most of the mold that I'm familiar with, if it's opened up and aired out and some procedure to get air in there, it'll probably disappear, but before we spend the money and waste $500,000 building that way, go ahead and take a look at it.
Set a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to delay this item until a mold inspection can be done. Do I have a second?
That building can be utilized, and this roof on it is the same type of roof that's on Aldrich Hotel, and we put a new roof on it 16 years ago, and it's still, it's still not leaking or not any problems with it, so, like I said, it's 14,000 square foot building, and the value of it, once the mold is eradicated and once the asbestos has been abated, is about $500,000 to $600,000. So if we tear it down and just completely destroy it, I'd rather see it opened up and used as a garage rather than just completely destroy it. And I personally never bought the building to, voted to buy the building to see it destroyed or torn down.
Is that an offer of $500,000?
No, it's an architect's estimate of what it's worth. Once it's been abated and everything else. I mean, I've done, we've done school buildings, we've re modeled them and everything else, and taken petitions out, and we've added petitions, rewired them, re-narrated them, everything else in three months, so. And it sure enough just cost $159,000 square foot to do it, and I think that $159,000, $269, estimate is completely out of line. As for the assumptions of what was given to the architect when he did it, but I think it's a waste of half a million dollars to tear it down without having a mold inspection and finding out what we're dealing with. If in fact it can't be eradicated, then I say tear it down, but if it can be eradicated, then we need to do that. Once it's certified as a mold-free, then you can do with it what you want to.
Is there any asbestos in it? You know, asbestos?
Yeah, the ceiling tile and floor tile.
Ceiling tile, floor tile, yes, sir.
But you don't have to remove the floor tile. All you have to do is remove the ceiling tile. If you can go in and capitalize it or cover it up or do anything you want to, as long as you're not standing there grinding it or something like that, you don't have to do anything with it.
Actually, Justin, was it, was there asbestos in the wrap of the piping in there, or was it ceiling tile? The majority of it was the ceiling tile and the floor tile.
What, can you all do some investigation on this? What was your?
We did have a, what's called a limited asbestos survey done, and that is what we utilized when we bid this out for demolition, and the contractors used for their environmental remediation quotes. We did not have a mold test on it. There is mold in the building.
Is it the kind that would cause a health problem possibly?
We don't know that.
We don't know that yet.
That's why I say let's take a look at it before we waste that money and tear down a half a million dollar building.
This half a million dollar figure, I don't know about it, but what I'm concerned about is a possible litigation that could arise if we keep building the one it's in.
Well, if it's certified clear.
Well, we've had certified clear, so you know, and that doesn't stop any lawsuits, so.
Commissioner Smith, if I'd have been on the commission whenever we had a first claim filed by the place, we'd have took it to court rather than bleed a little bit and continue to bleed through 12 cases, so that should have been done years ago. I wasn't on the commission until the first one was filed. But anytime you have four or five people telling you you're clear of mold, and you go ahead and start paying people off, then why end up paying everybody off? It's just not, you know, of course, I'm concerned, it's not a good practice. So if you get certified it's free of mold, then you proceed with the construction. My construction experience tells me that's one of the better roofs, it's not a flat roof. It's a barrel-top roof, and those are very easy to maintain. Flat roofs are most expensive.
How old is that building? It's milled in the, do we know?
In the 50s, I believe. I don't have that right in front of me, but.
It's probably in the 50s.
I'd say 52 or 55.
But an old grocery store of any kind is going to have mold in it, because that's part of the, part of the, you know, game. Mayor, I'm not afraid of somebody filing suit if it's been certified as clean and so forth, whether it's taken to court and we'll fight it. And that's what we should have done.
Yeah, if you, in lieu of a second, I would move we approve the amount of $43,723 with M&M wrecking of Blanchard for demolition.
Okay, I now have a motion on the floor to approve staff's recommendation to move forward with the demolition. Do I have a second?
What page was that on?
240.
Okay, give me a second.
Need the parking space and just take the front windows out of it and use it for a parking garage.
Well, actually, all we'd have to do is take the plywood off. The windows are all knocked out of it.
Well, there's one set knocked out, but all of them are not knocked out, or one has up Sunday when I went by and looked at it.
I'd make the second, and I just don't, I just can't see.
Yep, you have a second?
The likely is the second, second to the one.
Okay, Commissioner Smith is the second on that. Do you want any other discussion?
Well, I think you're wasting half a million dollars.
I understand. Call roll please. Sims?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Herod?
No.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Excuse me, back to the agenda. Item number 15, new business.
Madam Mayor, I'm not aware of any new business this evening.
Administrative reports, bottom 16.
I'm not aware of any administrative reports this evening either.
We've covered everything, huh? We've covered everything, huh? Item seventeen, commissioners' comments.
I'd invite everybody to drive by out at the expo and look at your grass and your landscaping today. I've been there.
I've been there as well.
Have you been by it since Sunday?
Yes.
Okay. Then you noticed how the grass was torn up from horses and everything?
Yeah, I suspect that was from irrigation and, in a new plant, but it does need to be, I mean, staff out there needs to spend some time getting that rolled and, and repaired. It looks like we need, while we're on the expo, it looks like we need to run our street sweeper through there and get, uh, the lots cleaned up and whatnot. It was a lot of residue left.
Have we settled with the construction company, John?
No, sir, there's, uh, Miss Layne especially decided that they have to do, plus there's some extra work that they have to come back and do that they weren't able to get done in turn, uh, because of...
By the time? Well, I hope they're not gonna be held responsible for the turf that's torn up and everything like that.
Uh, we'll, we'll do what we can. Well, that is, that, that, we irritated quite a bit because of the heat and stuff and some soft and, I mean, some of that stuff just could be helped. After it's established, it's something that can be helped.
Any other comments?
Well, I would add to that, if we get on it pretty quick, while, while we've still got some moisture, that could be rolled and repaired very easily. But it looks great, the trees and, and the landscaping. Thank you.
Project itself looks great too. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sims and a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod. Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. We are adjourned. We'll open up the meeting for the Shawnee Municipal Authority, July sixteenth, twenty-twelve. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Collier.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Sims.
Can, could I ask one question on the rationing plan? I've had a lot of calls about simple landscape, flowers, shrubs around the house. It's inclusive, you can turn on your outside spigot on certain days, period.
Jim and I have talked about a lot of different things. We've had calls, commissioners, about charity car washes. We've had calls about new sod. We've had calls about, you know, can you hand water or can you not, you know, use your sprinkler system, that type of thing. I mean, the way that, the way that it's written, I mean, there's, there's really technically no watering on the days that you're not supposed to water. So, you know, I mean, if, if it pleases commissioners, we can go back and take a look at it. It is working. We have seen our consumption drop about, Jim, what would you say, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand?
It's holding pretty close to the six million mark. We were just glad that there weren't any further dips enough just to watch it for a while.
But six million is the magic number and it's, it's not an issue of water within the lakes.
Right.
It's simply our capacity, able, ability to, to treat.
Yes, sir, let us be clear, this has absolutely nothing to do with the amount of raw water capacity that we have going in the middle of the summer. It has everything to do with the fact that our plant cannot treat anymore. That word kind of got out and I tried to, we tried to, to bring it back because the capacity that we have in our lakes is not the issue, it's the capacity at the point at the treatment plant.
And one quick comment is the six million, six million gallon, that's an annual, I mean, the average weekly, so we're getting up to six threes and six fours and stuff like that, so it's not, it sounds like we can't do more than six, but we can, but this plan is a, is the average of the week, so you'll have lower and higher, so we're, we were peaking six threes and stuff like that, but it has eased down, so we just thank everybody for taking it serious.
Their conservation, if there's a way to consider, I mean, if you guys can bring back maybe an idea on, on...
We, we talked about that and, you know, I mean...
Some trebries and stuff.
We, we, we really didn't think about that necessarily when we did it and now that, now that it's out there and our citizens and customers are starting to figure it out, I think that's a good point. We can kind of, um, see what their concerns are and, and maybe ease off on that a little bit. And I think, I think too, I've had some inquiries over, over our, our watering schedule in the six PM to ten PM and so we may adjust that also, but, um...
I think it's new to all of us and I just think it warrants some, there's been some feedback from the community and it warrants some, some consideration.
But it's working.
So, uh, how much, how much water per day are we selling to the Camisa?
Every, oh, let's see, average about seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand gallons a day.
So, are we any further along with attempting to let them tie into that thirty-inch line so we won't have to process their water or where are we on that?
They're in the process of, of right-of-way acquisition, as I understand it, Commissioner.
To where? To West Watkins or to us?
And their plan just, I mean, just talking to me is to probably stay on us through the summer and probably get back on their lakes and wells around September, but I mean, you don't know. Depends on what happens and that's kind of, that's kind of an unfair test of our first time with rationing because, you know...
Even on a temporary basis, other than us, rather than us having to process the water, look to me like it'd be on even, you know, you're talking about a year down the line probably before they get the line laid and everything else when you're talking about not very far to hook up, my understanding, not very far to hook up to the thirty-inch and go to, go to Tecumseh and let them process their own water, that way we wouldn't be under the, over the, around the six million gallons, so I'm not saying cut them off, but if we could, even on a temporary basis, let them have raw water until they get the line in or something.
Hopefully, if we get through the summer, they can make some progress or if it would just rain, it would be nice. In the next year and get their, like, well, we'll just deal with it the best we can right now.
How much are we selling to Meeker?
It's not much. Meeker and PCDA don't use very much at all. It's just guessing without looking, maybe two hundred thousand a day or something.
Well, that's been the questions and I've had very few people that have asked me personally. They're, they're saying, why aren't we selling water in Meeker and Tecumseh? And you have to kind of straighten out that scenario, you know, but, but once you kind of explain it to them, it's well, it's the right thing to do, we need to help our neighbors and that's, that's right, so it's just a temporary topic.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Call roll please.
Collier.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, new business.
Madam Mayor, no, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion by Vice Mayor Collier and a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll please.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are adjourned and we will open up the Shawnee Airport Authority meeting for July sixteenth, twenty-twelve. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion to approve by Vice Mayor Collier.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Sims, was that you? Okay. Are you ready, Donna? Call roll please.
Collier.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, discussion, consideration and possible action on lease between Shawnee Airport Authority and EA N Holdings LLC for space and airport terminal for enterprise car rental.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I apologize, there's not a memo with this.
Yeah. It's not a staff recommendation.
Mary Ann and the enterprise people have been, are back and forth quite a bit with this lease, I think, and, uh, gone with, uh, what the, uh, Airport Advisory Board recommended. And, uh, on page, I believe, page ten, article four, the, the rent is basically a dollar fifty per square foot per month for the space. And then, uh, there's also ten cents per square foot for the parking spaces, they're gonna park approximately twenty cars out there. And there'll be five spaces dedicated in the parking lot for the, their traffic that comes in and out of the building. And then they're also gonna rent a small space in the, in the large, uh, hangar to , uh, wash their cars. And this is...
Are they gonna provide the, all their equipment?
Yes, and they're gonna pay for the water.
So it's staff and Airport Advisory Board's recommendation to approve this as it stands? Okay.
Greg, will they buy jet fuel for the vehicles?
For the vehi... Well, for summer.
Looking for revenue.
Just the Corvetts.
Just the Corvetts.
All right, it was a pleasure.
I believe we approve the contract.
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Smith. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three, discussion, consideration and possible action on lease between Shawnee Airport Authority and Oklahoma Aviation for terminal space.
Page twenty-five has a memorandum about this particular lease. Same thing that the board recommended, a dollar fifty per square foot, um, for the space. And, uh, all they're gonna be renting is basically the mezzanine area and then using a part, portion of the apron to park their airplane. They will be buying quite a bit of fuel from us as their business gets going.